Welcome folks to this weekly webinar back to school online registration work session. My name is Jake Benskoy. I am joined by a host of panelists here with me are Denise Drew, Linda Hill, and Rachel Cox. Any or all of you want to say hi?
Hello and good afternoon.
Hi everyone, I'm Denise.
Hi, I'm Linda Hill.
These folks have all worked in front offices and now work for JMC and/or still work for their front offices at their schools. I am a trainer at JMC, worked in public school in Eastern Iowa for, I don't know, going on 15 years in various capacities of anywhere from being a teacher to an instructional coach. And delighted to be in this work session, something that we've been doing a little bit more here lately. And it's kind of a format that I enjoy. It's not necessarily the, you know, the how tos, the nuts and bolts of this, but this is meant to be a collaborative session. So we've already gone through all the how tos about that back to school online registration process. We have our webinar series that takes you through the preparation and the processing and then what your families would expect to see on the family end. This work session is going to bring all of it together. I'm going to go through high level, these tasks, essentially what they are. And then if you have any questions or are curious about some implementation within your own school, this would be great, great opportunity to ask those and to learn from each other. So if anybody wants to speak, we can give you speaking privileges. Otherwise, feel free to use that Q and A chat feature that is located on the webinar toolbar there for you. And we'll get going. So I just have some questions prompts basically to get the juices flowing, the wheels turning. So as I go through some of these pieces, I'm going to show live looks and things of that nature. So hopefully you get a chance to see what I'm talking about. And if you have any questions as we go, feel free to jump on in. So the first question prompt that I've got today is how do district and building level settings enable the various components of online registration for families? So what we're talking about here is getting started in the online registration process. And a few of those controls that I'm talking about would be on the JMC family online registration setup configuration options page. That's a mouthful. So we're under JMC family, online registration, setup, configuration options. And within this, we have district and building level settings. And your district level settings, you know, you've got your start instructions for your families. You've got your finish instructions for your families, but the main ones that I'm concerned with right now are these family permission settings. And there's a series of checkboxes that allow parents or contacts to use all registration controls. Or you can turn on specific pieces of the registration process. So everything you'll notice right now is turned on. And I'm going to just kind of take you piece by piece and shut them off one at a time and show you, show you what it looks like. So as you start to, to work with this and roll this out, you might want to shut off or turn on certain pieces as you go. So with everything turned on, your families are going to have this register for the 24, 25 school year in their web, sorry, you're there. Why is the word escaping me? Their, their menu tree, there you go. It's in their menu tree. It's right there. It says 24, 25. And then all of these items, they can start, continue the registration process, all their custom fields, the signable forms, all that fun stuff here. And each of these items shuts off or turns on each of those things. So the very first, the highest level piece is this registration page. If you want that to go away entirely, you remove the check mark, click save. It's letting you know that it's been saved. And then when, and I've got to log out and log back in for this to take hold. They'll still see register for 24, 25, but nothing will be on that page. So registration controls have been disabled. This is probably the best way to go about it if you're working on preparing for the, the online registration for next year. Shut that thing off. So families don't go in and accidentally access half completed information. It happens all the time, you know, your, your school is in the process of working on this. So if it's still turned on, if somebody just happens to log in and they start, they see this register for 24, 25, they're bored, they start sending you stuff that you don't want yet, and then you have to have them re-register. So our solution to that was just our master control switch. So I'm going to turn that back on. And then log out here. So the next thing, the, the registration process, and this is a bit of a misnomer. Kind of what we're talking about here is that, that second layer that allows them to enter their demographic information. So if I log back in, I know you might be thinking of the registration process as everything. In JMC world, we just think of this as families entering their demographic information. So they can go to register for the 2024 or 24, 25 school year. That very top item that says start or continue the registration process is, is not there anymore. So they wouldn't be able to update any of their demographic information, add emergency contacts, add new students, all that fun stuff. They would still be able to access their, their custom field information, their custom fields questions, which we're going to get into in just a little bit. They would still be able to access their lunch and tuition and fees and that, all that sort of stuff, which they would be able to access all of this throughout the menu tree anyway. It's just a matter of this registration dashboard containing links that would take them to those specific places. So for example, they click launch, which is going to take them to the lunch module. So any questions about the controls for families? You know, I can go on further with the, allowing them to to submit contact information and answer digital equity questions and things like that. But you can have any combination of these turned on as you will. So.
Jake, I don't see any questions coming in, but maybe just two things to add. So when you were mentioning, you know, turning off the registration process or not allowing families to even access it until you're ready to turn it on for that school year. I would recommend even the same thing in reverse for the prior school year. Because every so often we'll have a question come up where families swear, I've, I've submitted my registration. You have, but you were in the wrong school year. They were still working in the previous school year. So turning it off for the previous school year, just to kind of give families that visual cue that this is, this is not where I need to be. And then another thing that I'd maybe point out on the, yep, they're on the office side. In the menu tree, if you scroll down just a little bit farther, the district login message is another great place to put that information at the beginning of the school year. In the prior school year saying, hey, families, please remember, log out, select the new upcoming school year, then log back in so that you'll be able to register for the upcoming school year. Because on that family sides, they do need to use the year dropdown date to make sure that they're advancing to the next school year.
Two great points. So I believe what you're talking about here would be the, the start instructions for families. So we are in the 23, 24 school year. We've got, you know, our instructions there, but what we want to do is eliminate those instructions and say something to the effect of, and very largely and very loudly and very colorfully, so they understand it and know it. We're going to say you are logged into 23 for our school year. Log out. Change the year, can't type today. Continue. That is a great point. I'm going to save that just to show you what's going to happen when your families accidentally then do this. So I'm going to log out altogether. I'm going to go back to our page here. And we're going to log in as a family. I've already switched this forward, but you know, a lot of your families have not switched this forward yet. They've still been used to using that 23, 24. And the first thing that they're probably going to do in 23, 24 would be registration. So now they head to the registration page. They start, continue the registration process and it's going to give them, ah, you're logged into the 23, 24 school year. Log out, change the year to 24. Okay. All right. So provided they read that message, that, that should head them off at the pass. So. Drop in, Rach.
Yeah, I was even thinking larger scale too, like in that district message, you could include something like right there, that note from the district.
Yes.
Yeah. And that login message.
That's what you're talking about. Okay. District login message. That's another great place to do it as well. Yeah. So same thing here. 2023 is over. Time to put the acid washed jeans away or whatever. I don't know what the fad would be for that.
I mean, that, that message is a great thing to keep updated throughout the school year. But you know, toward the beginning and as you have your families registering, just some reminders about how to register successfully. That's a great place to put that information.
Great. Anything else to add? Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, the next item. Does anybody have any questions about creating custom fields, the different types of questions available or setting up conditional questions? So these are frequent items that come through our tech support. Folks have questions about custom fields questions. And if you're just getting started in online registration, if your school hasn't done it ever, the, the first, it requires a little bit of rethinking about how you go about collecting information. You know, in the, the day of filling out packets, you might've had a whole bunch of information that your families would have to sign six different release forms. And you know, maybe fill in their, their information in triplicate and you know, all this stuff. So our online registration is designed to save your family's time and it's designed to save you time in the front office. So that you're bringing that information into JMC doesn't require dual entry on your part. And one of those pieces would be our custom fields questions. And I'm going to go back to the, the school level. We're going to go back to online registration setup, configuration options. And this is at the, the district level. I'm sorry, at the building level down here, and we're talking about custom fields questions. And I already have several that have been created. Again, you can include those in your registration. You can require them in your registration and then you can control which grade levels answer those questions. So you know, if you've got kids that don't drive yet, for example, is your, is your student going to drive a car to school? You know, I don't need to ask that to my kindergartners through seventh graders, but I might need to ask that to my eighth graders through 12th graders. So it's a way to skinny up the registration process for folks that might not have to necessarily answer a question. So how do these questions work? Well, if, I mean, I can click this link over here and that's going to take me directly to the spot in the program to define those custom fields questions. But it's under file, define custom fields. And you'll notice there are several questions here. If you're just getting started into this, this whole section is going to be blank. You're adding custom fields questions by clicking that plus button. And then you've got a few different types of questions that you can ask. So this is requiring a text answer. We also have a yes, no answer. Families can answer with a date or it can be a numeric answer, which that, that just changes the way that families would interface with a question. The year specific and year independent, and by the way, these tool tips are super handy. So if you hover over and you're wondering, what does year specific mean? What does year independent mean? If you hover over, it's letting you know, year specific requires families to answer that question every year. And year independent, the family's answer is going to show up every year. So typically an address doesn't change on a year by year basis. So if you want, address is a bad, bad example, but let's say using a student photo on our social media accounts. That answer typically doesn't change from one year to the next. And rather than forcing your families to answer that, we can make those questions year independent. So then the, the family's answer from the previous year is going to show up. And then their registration is just a review of what they've already answered. And if it's changed, they can still change it. And if not, they can just leave it as is and their answer is going to hold through for the, the current year. The, a little bit about the conditional questioning, we get this quite a bit. You, you might notice these links over here on the right hand side. So the, the link is indicating that the answer to this question will possibly direct the, the, the user, your family member to a, a future question. So for example, can we post your student's photo online? The data entry type is a yes or no. If it is a no, then we're going to skip the next X number of questions all the way up to this graduation service requirement. So let's just say I have a series of related questions. So can we post your student's photo online? Yes. Next question might be, can we post your student's photo to Facebook? Can we post your student's photo to Instagram? You know, so we have like three or four questions that are all related to this question. Well, if the answer is a flat no, you can't post our school or, or photo online. Then we know that the answer to those remaining questions that go with that are also going to be no. So that feature allows you to just to skip forward in that questioning. It only works for yes, no questions. And where we get kind of sticky with this is if we create our questions, we create conditional questions. And then we start reorganizing the order that our questions appear. You know, we, we have essentially broken the link. If we change this question to, you know, if we move it down to here. So you can see that graduation service requirement question is all the way down here. So these next seven or eight questions are dependent on my answer to this. Well, if I moved this down below my graduation service requirement question, it's going to break the link. And it's, it's going to let me know like, hey, you just moved some skipped items. You're going to have to reestablish your, your linking if that's indeed what you meant to do. And like, oh no, I didn't really mean to do that. I want to move it back to here and now it's, it's going to air out and it's, it's, it doesn't necessarily like it when you try to reorder questions that are linked. So something that comes up quite frequently to our tech support, just thought I'd point that out. Get the questions in the order that you want them and then start with the, the linking, the conditionals. So is there any questions about custom fields questions in general?
Nope. I don't see any questions coming in. Maybe just one thing I would add, and that you kind of touched on this with the, the millions of forms that would get sent home or that you'd have to go in and fill out. If you're thinking about using these, you know, custom field questions, just take a look at that form and, and think about what is this really asking? Can this be answered with a yes or no? Is the form necessary? And sometimes the form is, but you can save yourself a lot of paperwork by condensing it into one of these custom field questions.
That's great. Yes. And you know, just to, to add, once that information is in your system, you can access it several different places, you know, directly from the student data page. Your, your students' custom fields, questions, answers are going to be listed right there. You can run reports, so student lists. So if you want a list of students that are going to be driving their car to school, we can go to attendance, student lists. We can throw in a couple of our common items, name and grade, resort that grade first, and then I can grab my custom field questions. And I just want to know, can my student drive to school? So is your student going to drive a car to school? That's the, the only question I want on that. I preview it. And now I have, I can create a spreadsheet that has a list of my students and then their answers. I can even filter this down further if I just wanted a list of students that answered yes to this. And you know, I can, I could sort, who do I want in the report? I can add custom fields. Is your student going to drive to school? I just want search for yes. So okay, preview. And now here are my students that are going to drive a car to school. And I can save this report. Student drivers. And then at any time, if that gets updated, I can come back and run this report and it's going to spit back out the students that drive. So several handy utilities. I talked to a school, you know, that, that just recently made the transition from online reg, or from paper pencil registration to online registration. If you were to ask the question, hey, can, is Jimmy supposed to drive a car to school? In, you know, before online registration, they would literally have to go find a binder that had all of these paper answers. Sift through those answers and then pull it up. Ah, yeah, his parents are giving him permission or no, they aren't. And not only that, they, they had to create the binder to begin with. They had to take all of these paper copies and they'd have to get them all in the right order. And that's if you could find the kid, if you were looking for him quickly. So you'd have to get them in alphabetical order and sort them by grade level and all this hours of work we're talking, hours of work, literally. And now, you know, you can access this data very quickly. You know, it'd take you 30 seconds to either go to the, the student data page or go to a student list. You know, I just created a list over one of these custom fields questions. And it took me about, I don't know, less than a minute. So any, any questions coming through on the custom field stuff?
No, no questions.
If not, very similarly, health custom fields help collect data that's shared directly with JMC's health module. So we do have two different versions of custom fields questions, if you will. We've got the, what I would consider the general education custom fields questions. And then we have the health related custom fields questions. The health related custom fields questions talk to the health module. And we do have some specific versions of questions, some things like allergy tables or medication tables, some things of that nature that can be used with the health custom fields questions. So we'll take a brief look at that. Let's go to JMC family online registration setup configuration options. Go back here, I can access the health fields from here. I could also go to health, health custom fields. And I can define the fields right here. I can also print these health fields there. So it's, these are in a separate part of the program. Different people might need to access this. Your, your health professional might need to access this. We want to give them streamlined approach to gathering this data. One of the pieces, believe if we wanted to grab, say, an allergy table, for example, I can grab. I don't think the allergy table is right there. There we go. There's my allergy table. So let's name that. Looks like I already created one. I've got one, but you would name it, your allergy table is right there. And then I'm going to show this from the family and just so you can see what an allergy table would look like. And it's all about how it would get pulled into the system. Because we want that data sorted in a way that we can get to it quickly. Go to my health custom fields question. So this is, it's not an allergy table, it's a medication table. But similarly, this is how your families would interact with this. All right. So name of the medication taken dosage, how often, conditions for they save, they send this in. And now your, your health professional has it right there in the health module. So they can add it to the, the medication log. They can add their inventory, all that, all that fun stuff, get those details and start scheduling those visits. So any questions about health custom fields?
No, no questions, but I would add that similar to the custom fields, these, these questions you can put into lists. And I used to do that a lot for our school nurse. Because sometimes she would need information from like the student's record or like family information, that type of thing, just to have it all in one place. So she could call the parents of students who had allergies and, and take that information with her. She only had, you know, maybe an hour at our school. So I would try to streamline some of that for her by getting her those student lists.
Excellent. Finally, the last question that deals with the setup. How can we assist you in preparing signable forms and downloadable content for your families during the online registration process? So what we've alluded to a few different times is if you're used to that paper pencil back to school online registration, you might have your families sign 15 different forms. Well, you might've figured out that we can get away from having to sign 15 forms. But we do need them to sign at least one form. Or there, there might be two things, or I still have this handbook that I want to get to my families. How can I get them that information? So this is downloadable and signable content. So we're back in JMC family, online registration setup. And now we've got downloadable content and we've got the ability to upload forms. So I'm, I'm just going to start here with the uploadable forms. These are forms that we would want our families to be able to sign. Simply add a new form, I choose the form from my computer. So this would be a PDF form, for example, something that my families would be able to read. And then, uh, once it's uploaded, now I can can add a little bit more information here. I can provide some instructions right here for this form. I can explain, you know, what, what is the purpose of this form? I can select who the form is going to be available for based on, you know, a grade dropdown list. So I can further define who is going to be receiving or required to fill out those forms. And then I've got some signature requirements that I can add. So if you see a blue check mark, that means that a contact signature is required. The, the contact single signature is kind of nice. You know, if we have four kids that go to the school and, uh, you know, really, I just need this form filled out once, or I just need, you know, it's an acknowledgement form. Hey, I filled out the, the registration information to the best of my ability. All right. I agree with your, your school's handbook policies. Great. I'm probably not going to agree for one kid and disagree for the other three. So we can include that contact single signature so that they don't have to sign the form four or five times. We can also require students to sign forms, which is nice. And then we can add a signature deadline in there as well. You know, you update, your families would access the signature. I'm, I'm back in JMC family. We can go in and sign forms right here. They can access the form. So here's my, my participation form. I can add a signature. I can add a student's signature from here. Or I can be a conscientious objector. And this is a piece that's been added to our, our, our forms here. So this is, you know, the, the parent doesn't want to sign the thing, but you need a record that they at least, that, that they're acknowledging, acknowledging that the form exists. So it's not like they just forgot to sign the form. They saw the form, they disagree with it. For whatever reason, they're not going to sign it. That's fine. They can decline and then you can run a report that we'll talk about here in a little bit, that, that's going to show you who has signed and who still needs to sign. The signature is kind of cool. I like playing around with it. You can just use your mouse and make your, make your squiggles and call it, call it good and save. Which I will do. Any questions about signable forms, the downloadable content, I guess? You know, this is just for families to, to have access to. So you know, you want to throw in there a PDF of your school's handbook. So your families can download it and peruse it at their own leisure. And upload that content here, pretty simple, add a record, you know, link, enter the name. Can upload that content here. Pretty simple. Add a record, you know, link, um, enter the name, choose the file. Create a description and then that, the name and the description will show up for your families on the, the downloadable links area right here. So we can go to downloadable links. There's my, my handbook. I give my detailed explanation of what that would be. So that's, that's everything that I have right here. So you can see that's, that's the handbook that they're accessing. There's the link to the handbook. And then what I've put in the filed description right here is showing up at the top of that label. So. Rach, anything to add? Any questions coming in?
Um, no questions coming in. The downloadable links, um, that was huge. I was the person responsible for putting together our online registration. And we would have like um, dietary forms. So ours, our cook would wanna know who was um, had any food allergies, who had um, like gluten sensitivities, those types of things, because they did have to be signed by a doctor, but not every parent needed it. So like printing off a hundred and fifty of these forms to have at our open house night was just a huge waste of paper because they were year specific. And also, you know, maybe five people needed them. So having those types of forms for um, for parents to get if they need them is super helpful. Uh, the other thing that I would note with the signable forms is um, how you can record a paper signature on the office side.
Absolutely. That's a great, great point.
Cause there's always some people who like either don't have a device or maybe struggle a little bit with technology and would come into the office and be like, can you just help me with this form?
That's great. Yeah. So um, this is just a, a record, uh, a, a way to keep track of those records. So this is under JMC family online registration. It's form signatures. Um, you can grab the form that we're talking about here. And then uh, you can see you know, right here, this parent, this was me just a second ago, signed on six twenty-six. And there's, there's my signature. So I can scroll through here and see who has and who has not signed. And um, you can add that paper signature. So the person came in, they're not great with technology. They say, hey, can you sign this form for me? I can't figure out how to do it online. I don't have a mouse. My mouse doesn't work, whatever. You can come in here and say, oh, sure. Record my paper signature. I grabbed the contact. Already grabbed that contact once. Let's go to this contact. I can say, yes, the contact signed. Uh, yes, the student signed or signed or declined. A- and then I clicked save. And now it's recorded my, my signature, my responses. And if I scroll down here to that, that kiddo, um, it says we have a paper signature on file now. So. Nice way to, to keep track of that for folks that might not might not have access. And, and for all those, speaking of the access thing, I've, I've heard this um, from a few schools. They value that back to school night as a, a connection piece. And you know, you have your families come in, they fill out the forms, they chit chat. You get to know them, you get, they meet your administrator, all those things. And you know, y- your school might not wanna lose that, and that's great. Um, one of the things that I, I recommend is set up computer kiosk stations uh, around your school. You know, you have uh, five or ten extra computers available as your families are coming in, you know, that just because we're, we're going online doesn't mean we have to not be face to face. So um, this, uh, this gives you a great opportunity. Once it's speeding up the process, your families aren't, you know, getting their, their hands, hand cramps by filling out fourteen different forms. You know, they can go through, they can do this online quickly. You can have your, your back to school night with all your activities and all your fun stuff that you have going on uh, right there as well. So um, just to, you know, another thought that, you know, just because it is online doesn't necessarily mean you have to lose that connection. Uh, you can maybe even repurpose that time that they're, they're, they're saving uh, for, you know, something else. You wanna have uh, presentations. If you wanna have breakout sessions where they talk to different teachers, all that fun stuff.
Yeah, I would, I would second what you just said. I think it makes that evening even more efficient because if you have this this information, if you have registration prior to that open house event night, you know, those families who maybe are missing, missing some piece of registration or who you need to connect with, you know, maybe they have an outstanding bill or something like that. You now have all this registration information prior to that evening. So you can just talk to those few parents rather than spending so much of the time just worrying about registration.
Absolutely. So we've, we've already taken a look at a little bit of this, but completing the registration process in JMC family. Um, one of the things that we recommend as you're going through this process. Um, yeah, have it shut off for your family so that they can't jump in when you're not ready or, you know, not anticipating answers to come in. But uh, once you've gotten yourself into a place where like, yeah, this is uh, we're ready for this. Um, I would advise you to find somebody in your school that has a student or create a fake student so that you can log in as a, a, a parent from the, the family end to see what this looks like, to go through this process. Um, you know, a third option, kind of, this is what we leaned on um, at school that I was at. You know, we grabbed a few people that, a few uh, family members that, you know, we knew that we were gonna hear from them anyway, eventually. That we knew we're, they were gonna have questions about this process. That's great. Bring those people in on the, the piloting process and let them go through online registration to see if they have any questions. And if they don't have any questions, you nailed it. And uh, you know, before you roll it out to everybody in your district, if you can get a few people uh, onboard, then um, i- it makes that transition much more smoothly or go much more smoothly. So um, do you have, does anybody have anything that they would like us to demonstrate or any specific aspects of the data collection process in JMC family uh, that you would like to see? I'll kinda go through it uh, relatively quickly, but if there's any, you know, if you wanna see what an allergy table looks like, we can set up an allergy table. Um, all that fun stuff. So I'm gonna go back to register for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, the first thing that you're gonna notice would be um, uh, uh, the dashboard itself has uh, some check marks and some checkboxes on here. These will appear filled in after your families have gone through each of these pieces. Uh, the first part there, start or continue the registration process. I click into this. Um, all of those instructions that you listed on uh, that start page are gonna be listed right here, including any links that you might wanna send them to. Um, for those of you that are wondering about uh, free and reduced meal applications and that sort of stuff. Uh, that does not become available. Generally speaking, I think the federal government has to approve uh, the language that goes on those forms. And it doesn't typically happen until after the middle of July. And um, there's nothing that we can do about that. Those, those forms will not be available until um, they've been approved. So um, you can keep an eye out for, for those. Once they become available. Um, they navigate from one page to the next using the next and back button. Um, your contact information is listed up here. This is already gonna be in your system. But you know, you can add phone numbers, you can add email addresses. Um, change your address if you need to uh, for your contact information. Um, gonna click next here. And these would be my students. Um, you cannot change or a family cannot change a student's name. They can't change their gender. They can't change their grade. This is uh, these would all be controlled in the office. So if your, if your family wants to change anything like that, they would have to reach out to you. So that's something that you could uh, include in your instructions as well. They can add a student cellphone number. They can add a license plate, a, a secondary email address. You know, your, your primary email address is probably gonna be your school email address for your student. Uh, last school attended. And then we have the race ethnicity questionnaire listed on there as well. Now um, any, and I think many of these items you can turn off and on is, uh, I, I know the, the race ethnicity questionnaire, I believe you can turn off uh, from the office end as well. I'm gonna check just to make sure. Oops. This would be building level, general data. Yeah. So we can decide whether or not we want to hide or allow edit. Um, so yeah, there's, there are my um, race ethnicity, if I wanted to allow them to view and edit, or I could hide it altogether. So any or, and all of these items are available for view or hiding, um, you know, with your name and some of that information there. So. Any questions coming through?
Yeah, we have one question here from Julia. Um, she'd like to know if we could share some frequently used forms and or questions. So I'm, I'm thinking like those custom fields questions. Are there some frequently used questions that people put out there? Or are there forms that schools tend to use more frequently in this registration process?
That is a great question. I would love to hear from everybody on here about that. Um, you know, I, I can pull up what we have listed. Um, just because when we, you know, sample these or when we uh, um, when we work with our, our demo databases, a lot of times we include questions that we think schools are gonna have. So um, I'll go back to, let's go to my, whoops. Custom fields questions. So um, are there any other people that can pick up your student from school? If so, please list their names and the relationship to the student. Uh, is you're gonna, is your student going to drive a car to school? Can we post your student's photo on our school's Facebook page, Instagram page? Um, do you wanna order prom tickets? May your student have access to the internet.
That was, at our school, we would use that kinda more as a form, which was like, you're agreeing to our technology use.
Yep.
Um, code. So that would be a form and that we would actually have that be a signable form because we'd want uh, parents and students to acknowledge that.
Um, post your student's photo online, uh, administer Tylenol or acetaminophen um, to your student. Um, let's see here, what else are some common ones that I would say?
In an elementary stu- school, we would have a question in there. Um, is it okay to share your family's contact information uh, with other parents in the classroom, like uh, in instance of birthday party invitations? So that would be a way that we could ask that question upfront. And we would say, uh, what can we share? Phone number or just email address? Like what kinds of things are appropriate to share with other parents in your child's classroom?
Um, can we allow um, I'm sorry, insurance information? You know, uh, some schools require insurance information. That's something that you can share through uh, custom fields as well. I'm thinking now in the, the world of forms, you know, technology forms, you know, schools that are one to one computer to, to student ratio may, can your student take their computer home? I know that's something that, that always comes up. I- is your student allowed to uh, take their computer home? If yes, please pay your, your fee. You know, there's a lot of schools that require a hundred dollar deposit or whatever for schools that are, for students that are taking their technology home with them. You know, waiver forms, you've got uh, field trip forms, uh, potentially, uh, you know, anything that you might have your family sign throughout the year. Um, you know, absence forms. They, they can be added to this as well. Um, athletic participation forms. Your school's handbook. Trying to think what else. Anybody else chiming in with anything?
We don't, uh, Julia kinda has a follow-up here to her question. Um, do you know if you can include a link to a Google form? Um, and you can, when you were showing the, like the starred instructions where you can include links, we would include things there in our registration or even at the end, like, hey, now that you've registered, follow this link to fill out X, Y, or Z.
Yes. Yeah. So that's, I think that was in the start instructions.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, I've included a couple links here and you've got the ability to add a link right here. This button is gonna allow you to add a link to the worldwide web. So if you had a Google form that you wanted your families to fill out, you could include that there. And then I'll, I'll just go back to your families would just be accessing it by, you know, clicking through there. Obviously, our links are dead, but.
Leave it to Jake to have a dead link on his registration page.
Of course I would. Actually, I expected that to go to, uh, never gonna give you up by Rick Astley. I was hoping it was going to. Who doesn't love a good Rick roll every once in a while, right?
Yeah. Uh, one thing that our, our school nurse always wanted included on those health custom fields was just a really kinda general and broad question of is there anything you would, uh, anything you would like us to know about your child's physical or mental health? And that could kind of just open up a conversation. Um, I think we, we think about all these specific instances, but that might lead to something bigger that either the front office or a school nurse could then have that conversation with a parent.
Yeah. And, and once those custom fields questions are pulled in, you run that report on student lists, you know, and filter it down to the, yes, there is something. And now you've got your list of kids and parents that you need to have a conversation with, a follow-up conversation with. So, yeah. Monuments of efficiency there. Um, a few of the things that I did wanna point out going into this though, um, if you require uh, questions to be uh, asked or answered, I'm sorry. Uh, your families will not be able to advance to the next page without uh, answering that. So if you're wondering what the difference between a required question and an included question is, uh, again, we're back to uh, let's let's go to our custom fields questions. You know, you've got included and you've got required. If it's included, your families are going to see it. If it's included and required, your families are not going to be able to advance without answering it. So um, once they advance. You know, you, we've got contact information, emergency contact information. This is, this is new. I, very recently, I think within the last year, if you've got emergency contacts that are uh, listed as another student's primary contact. Uh, we're not gonna let you pull in or change any of that data. Uh, so you don't end up with duplicate uh, emergency contacts in your system or duplicate contacts in your system, which is nice. Here's that question. This was actually listed in the health that, that you're just talking about there, Rachel. Would you like us to know anything uh, about your student's physical or mental health for the upcoming school year? It'll take you to your downloadable content right within that registration process. Um, this piece is, um, you know, some schools have uh, different policies on families adding new students. Um, a, a question that comes up frequently, you know, if, if you're an existing family in, in JMC, I'm gonna go to our, back to our landing page. Um, we've got some families that, that still wanna use this new family enrollment, even though they already exist in JMC. Um, you know, for a new student. So you got a kid that's entering kindergarten, you know, they're trying to figure out how to get their kindergartner into JMC. So they go to the new family enrollment. Now you have to redirect them. Um, some schools also use um, this in, in place of their kindergarten roundup. And sometimes that this doesn't happen until, you know, uh, February or maybe March of the uh, school year. So um, depending on how you handle your uh, kindergarten roundup, you might want to disable the ability to add a new student. Um, this is done on let's see here, I think this is on the family access tab. Yeah. Allow new student addition. So I'm at the building level, family access tab, allow new student addition. If I remove that check mark, then your families are not going to be able to uh, they, they won't even see this page when they go through the registration process. Um, you know, so that, that's a setting that you can turn on and off when you feel the need to. So for your oct- let's just say for your August registration, you don't wanna allow your families to add new students. But then come kindergarten roundup time, you do wanna give them that opportunity. You can always come back and um, add this here and then have your families go through the online registration process to add their new students. Uh, once they are finished, you've got the, the optional comment for office staff. Once they're finished, they're gonna receive the message that says registration's complete. Emails sent to the primary contact are not prime, not sent because they don't have a valid email address in this case. Uh, they click okay. They're letting you know that um, uh, your, your exit instructions here. So they've completed what we would call the demographic portion. There still may be things that you want them to do, such as, I want you to pay your fees. I want you to add money to your student's lunch accounts. Uh, I want you to I want you to pay your fees, I want you to add money to your student's lunch accounts, uh, I want you to do to. Contact the office to let them know that you've completed online registration or whatever. Those, those types of bits should be in your, your finish instructions there. So that, that way, you know, if you have that Google form, this is another place that, that you could include that link if you wanted to, so. Hey, make sure that you go to this Google form and fill this out when you're done, click okay. And now it's going to show up, I, I'm checked, that indicates that I have completed online registration. I haven't done the digital equity questionnaire, that's separate, that's a different part here, I haven't signed forms yet. So when you're thinking of online registration as a whole, there might be some other elements to it. Doing, uh, paying lunch, tuition and fees, signing forms, all that fun stuff, so. Uh, you might want to include that in your finished instructions, just so your families don't think like, hey, I went through and. Answered the custom fields questions, updated my students' data, so I'm done, right? Um, I would point them directly to these links and you could even include the URL. To these links right there, so if you wanted them to go to the sign forms, you could include this link right there in your finish instructions. Sign your forms, exclamation mark, and it's going to require them to log in, but I can link them there. Save. After run through this thing all again, but that's fine. Log out, log back in.
I think we would do something similar and that message would say, you're not done until you've signed your forms.
I get to the end, registration's complete, okay, great, sign your forms, oh, okay, sign my forms, I click this. And it's going to take me directly to that page, so. Just some, some thoughts there as to how you can configure that to set your families up for success. Anything else specific you'd like to see, questions about downloadable content or signing forms, I think we, we've covered that already.
Yeah, I don't see any questions coming in right now.
Okay, um, we'll get into the processing and this might be more for your benefit in September. Uh, or August, after your families have gone through the process, um, you know. Reviewing, a major part of this, reviewing student primary contact, emergency contact information, once families have started submitting back to school data. Uh, you might not be there yet, and that's totally fine, there are a few things that I'd like to point out. Um, under JMC family. Uh, online registration, we're going to go to merge data, first off, before I even go to merge data, we're going to look up here. And I'm going to see some things start popping up in my blue upper right hand corner, like this one pending contact submission. So as your families start progressing through the online registration process. You're going to start seeing these alerts and you're going to see these numbers start to climb, that's just alerting you to the fact that. You've got some people that have submitted health data, some people that have submitted student data, contact data. You've got some enrollment submissions that are, that are out there available, keep an eye on this, so, um. You, you can take care of merging that data, um, as, as it, as it happens. So in real time, you can click those links, it's going to take you where you need to go, uh, in the program. You, you can handle this through rejecting or accepting, you can also print, so in this case, there are no changes. Proposed, so I'm going to accept, somebody just went through the process, they finished it, and it's alerting you to the fact that there might be some changes. I'm going to go to. Where's it, merge data, yeah. Go to student data, merge student data, and I'm going to try to find somebody that has some student data. Let's go to contact data, uh, we don't have any contact data submissions. One of the, the pieces that I was, uh, looking for where there, there are little checkboxes here. Uh, next to some student information or some family information, there we go. If I decide that I want to include or not include certain pieces, uh, of this data. Uh, into the system, I can remove check marks and, um, accept. And when I accept, it's not going to include the item that I've removed, so, uh, we've, we've provided some greater controls for. Uh, specifically the items that you want to have within, so it's not just a blanket, I'm accepting every piece of this. I might just accept bits and pieces, um, based on what they've in- included, so. We always know, you know, there's some, some families might not give you the, the best data, um. But we, we leave that control up to you. Uh, the second piece that I'd like to show you would be our progress dashboard, and I think this is the next question, actually. Um, yeah, how can the online registration progress? Um, how can we monitor the online registration progress? And, um, that's simply through our progress dashboard, and there's a lot of functionality, uh, within this page. Uh, first off, this is a table, I can create, um. A CSV file of, so if I want to look at this, review this information, um, on a spreadsheet. I click this little Excel icon, it's going to turn it into a CSV file, which is great. I can drill down to families or students that have not, um, completed the registration process. Which is very handy, you know, especially when I'm trying to figure out how many more of these do I need to do? Or if I have families that are kind of stalling out and like, uh, I still haven't heard from these 10 folks. Um, I can sort by my not finished registration. And then I can email my not family, not finished families and, uh, you know, encourage them to sign up, so. This is one of those things that I always, um. Uh, lamented in education, you get that blanket email, whether you're a teacher or a family member, I get this message, it doesn't apply to me. I don't know why I received it and it makes me wonder, and I hate wondering, you know, like. I, I thought I filled out this online registration, but I'm not sure now that you've sent me this email that indicates that I maybe have not. So now I have to go back in and check and sure enough, I filled it in and already, this has already been done and now like, all right, you just wasted my time. We can filter the families and then email those that have not finished. And I have mended two relationships with one click, it's kind of, kind of nice that way. Um, each of these columns here are sortable as well, so, um. You know, I can click. It's not going to sort anything because I don't have any balances, but if I wanted to see my higher balances towards the top, I could filter those, those balances as well, so. Uh, this page kind of functions like a spreadsheet in and of itself. Uh, there's a little carrot next to, uh, of the name of a family, so I can see. Specifically what they have not finished of the online registration process. Um, so forms done, nothing, forms not done, oh, they haven't done their Earth Week form, okay, great. Um, my finished families. It's going to show up here. Find somebody that's. Completed, it's going to let me know, um. You know, the students that are a part of and also free and reduced application status, if they applied last year, if they have not applied. Uh, that's kind of nice as well. We can filter by grade level, so if I just wanted to see 10th graders. I, this, these 10th graders are all, it's going to show up and I can email my 10th graders. I'm sorry, email my filtered families, so just whoever is on this page is going to receive my email, so. I love the, uh, the progress dashboard, gives us a great way to keep track of how far along. Uh, we've come with the registration process, works a lot better than that, you know, the, the highlighted sheet of, uh. List of names of folks, so as they come in, I check them off, you know, this, this kind of keeps track as you go. Anything to add, Rachel, or any questions coming through?
No questions, but I would just, uh, reiterate what you were saying, this is, this is huge, we would just keep this page open in its own tab. As we were processing the, um, the registration as it would come in, my, my one disclaimer would be, um. I know I, it, this happened to me once, like I would start kind of going through these registrations really, really quickly, like not paying really close attention. And I thought that I was, um, like updating student information, but a family that already existed went into new family enrollment. And I created a duplicate record, so take your time, look at what you're, what you're accepting. Um, but yeah, the dashboard is a very useful tool that helps, helps you keep tabs on those families that might need a little nudge. To get their registration finished.
Perfect. And with that. It's time for JMC news and upcoming events. We round out June, we're rounding the corner on June already and it's almost July, which is kind of crazy, so tomorrow we are all about the message center. So if you're new to JMC or if you have somebody in the front office that is new to JMC. That might be something that they would want to check out navigating the message center, that's tomorrow. Uh, July 3rd, almost time for fireworks, that's six plus JMC training resources for new office users and teachers. We know we have a lot of new staff that are joining JMC or joining a JMC school right now. Uh, we, uh, like to provide plenty of resources for those folks to get them training. So that they are up to speed once the school year starts. Um, July 10th, we are using JMC to manage student contacts, which is, uh, key for state reporting and other things that. That's going to be a great webinar to, to help get folks on the same page with how to enter and remove students from your. Oh, wait, no, 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 I'm sorry, I am previewing a webinar that's happening at the end of July, that's how to add or. Remove students from your, your district, my bad, this is managing student contacts, so that, that would be all about the association of. Uh, students with their primary contacts, and then on the 17th, we're tackling enrollment procedures for incoming and outgoing students. We want you to, uh, if you're interested in experimenting with, uh, online registration or anything in JMC, we'd encourage you to grab a sandbox. Learn, click this link here, uh, in the PDF that's, uh, in our YouTube description to learn more. If you're interested, reach out to sales@jmcinc.com. Um, mentioned before, with, uh, our new refresh, we also have a few refresh portals that are coming out. A brand new portal, Gate, uh, brand new portal, the general store, if you're interested in becoming a beta tester for. Either of those products, or if you're interested in, uh, giving your input, uh, please reach out to training@jmcinc.com to be considered. Uh, for Rachel Cox, uh, Denise, Linda, and anybody else who might have been joining us, we thank you for joining us for this weekly webinar and we will catch you on the flip side.